The President of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll calls?
Mr. Stern.
Present.
Mrs. Snyder.
Present.
Mr. Shaner.
Present.
Ms. Cole.
Present.
Ms. Robb.
Present. Sorry.
Dr. Holter.
Present.
Ms. Millinger.
Present.
Ms. Chamber.
Present.
We had an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss personnel matters. And we are going to start with the superintendent's report. However, I'm going to bump it to our student representative first so that he can get out of here earlier.
Thank you. Thanks for remembering that.
Okay, so December 20th, Student Council had their annual Powder Puff volleyball game. It was juniors versus seniors, and obviously the juniors went away with it, scores 50 to 48. And that was just an assembly. We had like the day before break, everyone got to get out of class a little early, and it was a lot of fun. Also, we had our Cavathon, which each district, or not district, each school, all the elementary schools, middle school and high school, they all participated in the Cavathon. The upper elementary raised $4,000 for that. They're the only total we have in right now. We're still waiting to hear from the other buildings. And usually, all the money, we pick an organization to go to. In years past, we've gone to the Food Bank, Tiny Cause Animal Rescue, and the library, and also Toys for Cabs, so we're going to do something like that again this year. We had our stuff-a-bus again. It went very well. We raised one and a half thousand dollars in monetary donations from just auction baskets and different donations, and that'll help go towards different things for next year. And then we also provided toys for 252 kids this year across the district, so it was a successful again this year. Our Best Buddies Club is going to Accra Shore Stadium in February. We're going to be doing a pull or plunge to help raise money and awareness for the Special Olympics this year. And our National Honor Society is starting to collect donations from businesses, and we're putting together chemo bags for different people going, undergoing like chemotherapy and that are like stuck in the hospital. And we'll be doing a Class Wars Week where it's like juniors versus seniors, freshmen, sophomore, all that. And there's going to be different themes each week, and people bring in money, and it's kind of like a battle of the classes, who can donate the most money. And then at the end of the week, we have a big assembly and play games and all that fun stuff. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. I'm going to have Jason Day give us a construction update. Would you like me to pull up the report?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, there's a couple pictures in there. So really, yeah, just following up from the meeting, we just had Buildings and Grounds. There's no change orders for the agenda tonight or the next meeting. I'll get those into February. As far as the construction progress, as discussed in that meeting too, we're on schedule globally, trending towards the completion date next December. As far as the actual work occurring now, I guess if you want to get to some of those pictures, I can kind of walk through some of these quickly. So the picture in the left-hand side is the new elevator pit. That is actually now all blocked in and waterproofed, and I believe backfilled. The picture of the concrete slab on the right, I believe is the location for the new walk-in cooler freezer, portion of the new kitchen area. These next couple pictures, the Lyocarius, the GEC continues through the building with demolition of walls, and then these new footers and some miscellaneous structural steel throughout the building. So the picture on the left is a good example of a fresh concrete patch poured in where that new, those new columns were placed, and then new steel beams. There used to be a wall there, I believe that's your old library. That's the correct location. The picture on the right-hand side, both of them are the beginning stages of your front entry where the stairs go up to the mezzanine. If you want to scroll to the front cover, Dr. Lor or Rick, whoever's got control, that's what it's going to look like in the lower right-hand corner. So, the two stairwells on each side, and then the walkway up above. Scroll back to the pictures. The lower, both those show the walkway, this new steel, and then the wood temporary handrail for safety. So they're going through the building, doing structural work in those structural footers. Couple more photos here. The upper right is the new locker rooms. So new masonry walls are being installed back there. And the other two are probably the second floor. They started to top off drywall in that corridor and then paint it because now all the MEP infrastructure goes up in between that. So that was done. And then just a picture of some blocking and wall blocking, and door frames have hit the site, so new hollow metal door frames are going in where stud has, stud walls have been built. That kind of sums up what Lyocarius is doing. As far as the roof, like we talked in the Buildings and Grounds, that's on hold clearly due to our weather at this point. But there's still time to complete that, and as discussed, they'll tear off appropriate quantity and dry it in in one day as they work through the roof when the weather finally breaks. Vable Plumbing, they're doing great. They're well ahead on rough-ins. All their underground rough-ins are basically done. They're doing a lot of above-grade rough-ins now. They started the sprinkler rough-in work on the second floor, Area A, and they continue through the building what they can get in. Legalia Mechanical, they've completed really majority of their work and equipment installation in the boiler room, and have started piping in the boiler room, so they've set new equipment in there, and they've continued to work in that space. The corridors, like I mentioned, the picture on the left, duct work has started. It hit the site. That picture was before the duct work arrived. So hopefully next month, I'll get you some better pictures of some duct work going in. I'll take a picture of the boiler room next time. That'll be a good for you to see. Again, they're, they're well ahead of where they need to be as well. They have all their rooftop units sitting here on site, so they'll be lifted on the roof at some point here in the spring. And most of their material and equipment is here or on its way. Allegheny Electrical, Allegheny City, again, they continue to try to get ahead of the game as much as possible with in-wall rough-ins, overhead rough-ins, the new electrical service. They still continue to do the trenching outside, which I think they're getting very close to having that done. The new pole is set out on the road from, you guys don't have decaying lighting.
West Penn.
West Penn. So that's done. So, all in all, things are moving forward as planned. Yeah, I feel good where we're at, but I'll continue to monitor for your, for your benefit. Any questions from anybody on the board, or as far as progress or the project itself? Thank you for the opportunity, and I'll see you in a month. But again, feel free to reach out to me if you need anything. John, I'll see you, well, no, not the next meeting.
Somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Day. We have a presentation from the high school, Mr. Matt Smith. Just to kind of give a segue, this is item 14.1 on the agenda. I know that he's probably going to share with you, they've been working pretty extensively in teams at the high school the last, better probably, year and a half to, to look at the course catalog and what we're offering currently, and making some course offerings that are a little bit more relevant and, and, you know, preparing kids and students for the, for the workforce. So, I hope I didn't steal any of your thunder, Mr. Smith. I'm going to turn it over to you to kind of share with us about these course catalog changes.
Thank you, Dr. Lor. You're always welcome to steal my thunder. It really is okay. You are, you are in charge. So, as Dr. Lor referenced, about 18 months ago, this really came from three different things, and it came together and culminated with what we're here tonight to present to you and hopefully get moving forward for our students. Really, there was three things that came together that led to this. And the first was the adoption of the STEEL standards, and the new science teaching standards, which is really a lot more project-based, hands-on. It's really units of curriculum versus the, the old, read these vocabulary words, memorize these, and move forward through the science curriculum. So that was one piece of that, that we've been studying with Ms. Mather here for about, you know, a year and a half, and working through the redesign of all of our science courses. And so that, that was one piece of this. The second was these different pathways to graduation that now exist. And so in the state of Pennsylvania, now it's no longer just, hey, you have to pass your Keystone test. There's now different pathways that include things like industry credentials and certifications that students can get. And we've started to identify that not every student in the state of Pennsylvania has to come through high school and go directly into college. And while we need that path, we also have to have other pathways and other options for students in our curriculum. And then really, studying our own curriculum in different areas. So when you looked at what happens past the Keystone tests, all of our Keystone tests wrap up by 10th grade. If the last Keystone test students take, there's some retaking in 11th grade, but the last main test that you take is in 10th grade. Beyond that, in our own curriculum, we look at some of the options that we have and the success that we're having in those options. For example, in social studies, you have economics as a semester elective that all students have to take, but then they have a choice of an elective to take as a second semester in their senior year. They can take psychology, they can take sociology, or they can take criminal law. And it's really a course like criminal law that starts to give you the idea of, that course came about, we offered it to students, and it's now our most popular senior elective for students to take, is that criminal law course. And then we looked at our English class, and in the senior year, in addition to our English and our AP English course, we have a contemporary English course. And that course is geared towards things like interviews, soft skills, they write a resume, they do some technical reading, things that will lead them directly into the workforce. And so students have been very successful in that course. So we looked at the last two remaining core content areas of science and math and said, how do we use those three things to redesign or reimage what we have to offer for our seniors, in particular seniors, in some cases juniors, for some courses? So, what you'll see, you have a whole packet from Dr. Schwartzlander that was sent to you. There are different courses, and there's a link on the PDF that'll take you to a full course description, including all of the units and materials for those courses. But in summary, we're looking at that senior year where we have Earth and Space as an elective, it's a full year, and we have ACM as an elective, it's a full year. We're going to eliminate those two courses and replace them. What we'd like to do is replace them with semester options for students to pick from. And some of those options include different, different levels. For example, in the math area, you have things like Skills for Careers, data, and Introduction to Data Analysis. We currently have the AP Stats course, which is well-received. We have about 100 students in that course, but some of them don't want to take it quite at that level. So getting an introductory statistics course was important for us, financial applications of math, and then when math and art collide, okay? And it gives us an opportunity to find some things that pique students' interest in the area of mathematics, create semester choices for them, so that they're not locked into it for a full school year. One math course that's a little bit different is the AP Computer Science A course. We currently teach Java at the high school. We would replace Java with the AP Computer Science A course. It is very similar curriculum, actually uses the same resources, but it would then become an AP-level course that we would give another opportunity for our students to earn an AP credit. On the science side, when you replace the Earth and Space, and you break that apart, we pulled out different things that would hopefully be more interested to our students that are seniors in the building. So the semester offerings there include Earth Science, Astronomy, Environmental Field Studies, Emergency Medicine, Sports Medicine and Nutrition, and then Organic Chemistry. And again, it's really creating pathways for students in all different levels. The Organic Chemistry designed towards those high-end kids that are going to college to give them a higher level chemistry course to prepare them. But then, like even the Sports Medicine course is an Emergency Medicine course, two different levels of that class. Students that may be wanting to go into the healthcare, physician's assistance, or physical therapy, or athletic training can take that Sports Medicine. But a student that maybe wants to be a first responder can take the Emergency Medicine course. Students that go down to the VOTAC and take the career, the health occupations down there could come back here and take a semester of Emergency Medicine and learn some of that emergency response things there. Environmental Field Studies, Astronomy, and Earth Science, again, breaking up pieces that are Earth and Space for your course into different semesters. What it allows us to do is maximize the flexibility for our senior class, so that they have different choices. Currently, they have to have seven credits. It's either four math, three science, or four science, three math. This would provide even another option, because they could really have three and a half math and three and a half science if they chose to go that route, or they could still have the four and the three. They still will have to get to the seven credits, but they will have different combinations and different ways to do that. And again, just allowing maximum flexibility. And again, just so you're aware, understanding the course request process, our students' course requests will dictate what we actually teach. So just because we create all these courses and offer them to students does not necessarily mean we would teach all of these courses next year. We will teach them when the students request them. So we put students through a course request process in February and March. If they happen to like the Math and Action Skills for Careers course, and they request it, and we get a class full of students request it, we will run that course. If that class is one that nobody signs up for, nobody's interested in taking, we will not offer that course then in the fall. So this creates options for them in, in the months of February and March, and then based on their course request, we would decide what we actually would teach moving into the 25, 26 school year. That's all we got here, Dr. Lor. Any questions or?
It's much more in-depth than what I shared, so thank you for coming.
How does this impact the teachers as far as they're structured in teaching, say, Earth and Space, and now you're going to have all these different pathways? So how does that responsibility change for the teachers?
Yeah, it doesn't change at all. So we only offered, when the, when the Science Department first came down, there was about 15 or 18 electives just in science. But what we did is we pared them back only to the ones that we could manage with the current staff that we have. So based on their certifications, these are all courses that we could offer. So if we had all these courses next year, we'd be able to teach them all.
Are there existing curriculums for some of these new proposed classes, or do they still have to be developed and teased out?
You, you should have the course descriptions and the, the, it's not the full curriculum, but all the different units are, are mapped out entirely for each one of these courses, along with all the resources. Again, the good part about a lot of these things, it's using some of the resources that we already have. There's really very few things where we actually have to go out and have anything different than what we currently offer.
The question I had was, the computer programming and Java does not seem to be an AP course, but now you're turning it into an AP course. Does that, you know, limit that class for students that perhaps aren't AP-eligible?
Yeah, well, technically, yes, but all, all students in our school are AP-eligible. We, we don't have any prerequisites on the AP courses, so they all can take it. That Java class currently, we only have one section of it. That's all we've had my entire 10 years here with you. Those students would all be students that would be in that AP realm that would be able to take that class. It's the same teacher. Honestly, she uses that textbook right now, the AP Computer Science principal, she uses it. So it's really just changing the name and then actually attaching it to the AP curriculum piece.
So, I do have a question. So, the financial applications of mathematics and Introduction to Data Analysis and Statistics. Is Excel used much in those courses? Like MS Excel?
I, I'm not 100% sure.
Okay, why I ask is this. So if we're talking about, like, doing things to, to get our students ready for the real world, as a, as a person, as a manager at work, and I, in math, that is like the biggest requested thing throughout our entire company, is people want more Excel skills. So it's like, it's, it's like learning a language. You have to start early, and you have to use it regularly, or you don't know it. So it's, it's really a cool thing. If it could, it could really have a good spot there if it doesn't.
Yeah, it makes perfect sense. Again, I, I used to teach math, so the idea of using Excel in the math class.
You love it. Okay, good.
Wait, wait, wait. I've got to ask this. Using Excel in a math class, wouldn't that be cheating?
No. Yeah, I could go all night on this too, but.
Do you think it's cheating?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. If you use it, it's not.
Learning to use resources.
If you don't, if you don't know how to do the formulas and the functions and understand how it works, you can't make it work. Dr. Lor can attest to this. Is that true?
I can.
Okay, there we go.
I love Excel. You know me.
So I do. I've seen it. I was in a meeting where I was like, "Dr. Lor, can I do this, please?" And he's like, "Go ahead."
I still think it's cheating.
No, it's using a tool. And then as you go forward in, in life, there, you know, there are other computer applications that you apply to it, so.
Yeah, and I'm old enough to remember in 1999, when I started teaching at the TROB, that there was a good population of our math department that thought using a calculator was cheating, right? And it was creating the same. So, over time, you use all the tools as they come to you, and you start to integrate them into your courses is, is the best practice. And so, yes, learning how to use it properly would be an excellent opportunity for all of our students.
Yeah, thank you.
The math and art collides. I can't wait to see how many people sign up for that and what that looks like, because that sounds, that description sounds, you know, really interesting too.
Is that kind of going, I'm sorry, is that kind of going off like Mr. Fantaski, because I know he's retiring, which makes me sad, because he won't get the third Kolakowski boy in the math class, but that's kind of what he, what he kind of does, right?
Yes.
Well, you know, I have a trend, like Smals and Fantaski, whatever. But, um, yeah, because he kind of came up with that original concept of his comprehensive math class, which does a lot of that intersection of the art and the math. It's really cool.
It's exactly where it came from. Mr. Fantaski was directly involved, because he taught the ACM class. We're, we're eliminating in this process, and that math and art collide pulls his favorite of the math and art projects out of that class.
And I know he mentioned it, but the PDFs in, in the board docs is, is that sheet, I think, that you're looking at.
Yeah.
We wanted to keep, keep it as simple as possible for you to see it all, but every one of those, of course, titles is a hyperlink to what the work that the teachers have done and put in. We just took the, the general description and put it in there for you to read real quick, but you can dive into any one of those and look, look at them in more detail. And they're still ongoing, working through them as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, that's all I have right now under my presentation reports.
Okay. Okay, next we have on the agenda, citizens' comments on agenda items. During this portion of the meeting, you may make comments about agenda items. As written in district policy, all citizen comments are limited to three minutes. We request that your public comments focus on issues or policies and not people. Please state your name, community in which you reside, and the agenda item you are addressing. I don't think, we don't have anyone signed up unless anyone wants to know. Solicitors' report?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Just two updates. One, for the procurement process, it did go up 2.4%. What that means is between 12,900 and 23,800. We have telephonic quotes, so anything below that, you don't need a, a quote, and anything above that, you need to get formal bids. So, again, went up a little bit, which is, which is good for the district. The other thing is, I did want to report on Title IX update, that a federal judge in Kentucky actually struck down the final rule that the Biden administration proposed. So with that striking down, it's vacated. We're going to look at, you know, how that's going to impact schools, but essentially, PSBA will put out a renewed policy. I'm predicting it's going to be going back to the previous policy before this was implemented. So, again, we'll provide as much updates as we possibly can to you, but I know PSBA also put out something saying they try to revamp and update the policy. But I did want to let you guys know that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Board representative reports for Northern Westmoreland Career and Technology Center. Kathy or Nicole, anything?
Yes, so we don't have a meeting until February, but we do get weekly updates similar to what Dr. Lor sends out, and I just wanted to let everyone know that the tech center was awarded the 2024-2025 Competitive Equipment Grant in the amount of $84,569. And the following items have been approved by the state of Pennsylvania to purchase to support the welding program. They have a plasma cutter, a tungsten grinder, 11 Lincoln MIG welders, and other assorted items to help with, with bending and welding. So, you know, again, I, I like to publicly say that Jason Hex has done an amazing job of bringing in money and done the best to really improve programs and, and the actual, you know, classroom conditions for the kids. So, you know, are really, really have good things to say about what he's done since he's been there.
That's great.
That's all I've got for now, but we'll report in February. It'll be after our meeting.
That'll be even more exciting for welding, because I know there's sometimes a waiting list for that program and now getting all that material, so hopefully that can definitely help grow the program.
Thank you.
Westmoreland County Intermediate Unit Number Seven, Jenna?
Next meeting is January 28th. We have not met since the last board meeting here.
Okay, thank you. Pennsylvania School Board Legislative Council, Melissa?
Nothing, missy thing.
The Kiskey Area Education Foundation, I went to the meeting yesterday, and it was their first public meeting that they have, that they have held. We did a lot of conversation around the golf outing, which will be held in August at Willa Burke Country Club, really talking about the tile program, where you can buy tiles that will get put up. And I know that there are 12 more that need purchase for them to actually start putting them up, so this is kind of a push for everyone to, to get, get, purchase your tile. And more talk around distinguished alumni and how to revamp that program as well. So that's, I think that was pretty much everything. And any other committee reports? John, I'm sorry, yes, for Buildings and Grounds.
I guess I should report that we have Buildings and Grounds meeting prior to this. You know, talked about the intermediate project, the status, financial, and the progress going on. It's still slated for 12, 125 for completion. We also talked about some of the elementary buildings, the needs there, and creating that priority list for future maintenance and projects.
Also, because we don't have our meeting on Monday, since it's a holiday, I want to say that on Tuesday, the 21st, at 5:00, we will have the A. Working Meeting for the policies, to review some of the policies that PSP, I always say wrong.
PSP.
Thank you. I always say PDSA. Reviewed for us so far, so we can review what we need to change if we're going to accept some of the recommendations that they have made to us, and what we need to do to tweak them for our district.
Reports to the board.
Yes, sorry.
Am I cussing?
Yes, so next Wednesday, under Reports to the Board, we'll ask the board to approve Items 6.1 through 6.4 on the agenda.
I think there was one thing I wanted to ask you, if that's okay on this. I was looking through, and, you know, I saw quite a few bigger expenditures, but the one that stood out to me was the Southeastern's Performance Apparel for Tuxedo Assembles and, and different things like that. Does that come, do we know what that $11,000 is from? Is it like show choir or something, something different there?
Okay. I don't know. I have a lot of them.
Okay, thank you. Any communication? Any old business? No?
Yes, personnel. On next Wednesday, Madam President, we'll ask the board to approve Items 9.1 through 9.8.
Can I just do a tech on, on 9.3, just so any of the existing employees at Smith know that we're still keeping that in our head? So the drivers that are being proposed for approval, are they replacing ones that have already left? Is that adding to their number so that we could use them now instead of using the other outsourced company for the extracurriculars?
It's a combination of both.
Okay.
So, we have been just using that right now for our budgets.
Great. Under Finance, you'll be asked to approve Items 10.1 through 10.4 on the agenda.
Does anyone have any questions on that?
Under Legislation, you'll be asked to approve Items 11.1 and 11.2. And just so, so the board's aware, that's the program through the Commonwealth where student teachers can apply for.
The grant monies, yeah.
For grant monies to do that, and that's the same for the mental health providers. We have an intern in our psychology department now that they would be, make them eligible for us to participate in that, so. Under Bills, you'll be asked to approve the bills, Items 12.1 through 12.3. Under Bills, you'll be asked to approve the bills, Items 12.1 through 12.3.
Anyone have any questions on any of those?
Under Student Activities, you'll be asked to approve Items 13.1 and 13.2.
Just a couple of questions about 13.1, and I am in no way like questioning the money to spend, but just out of curiosity and just to show that, you know, there's no favoritism among any kind of clubs or extracurriculars or academic programs. Is it typical for this kind of trip to be requested? I guess I'm looking at, you know, for example, of course, the Cavalier Choir, they're leaving at 2:00 AM this morning, next, tomorrow morning, for their Orlando, and it was a combination of the boosters paying and parent and student funding. Where does this money come from for these kinds of trips, for these organizations in the school?
Yeah, and Rick, you can weigh in, but typically, like the FBLA through the business, through the business department of the high school, that they include that in their budgets, and they've made a choice to include that particular cost. Music department makes, you know, makes choices each year budgetarily. I can say that we have had students attend this FBLA State Leadership Conference probably for the last, Mr. Smith, did you want to?
Well, it's exactly what you said, we budget it, but they have to qualify to get to go to this one, which is why it's a little bit delayed coming to you, because we don't know until they qualify.
Congratulations to them all. I was reading through all of the updates and the newsletters, and we had a lot of students doing a lot of great things this past month.
Yeah, I think in the years past where we've had more students qualify, that number was up to $10,000. So just depending on the number of students that qualify is what they budget for.
Thank you.
Yep. Other questions? Okay. Under Curriculum and Professional Development, you'll be asked to approve Items 14.1 and 14.2. We heard from Mr. Smith about 14.1. 14.2, the credit recovery, that appears on the agenda every January. These are just the courses that we will, you know, that we will offer, we may not offer them, that is dependent upon need, whether or not we offer those courses. Madam President, under Construction, you'll be asked to approve, the board will be asked to approve Item 15.1.
I don't really know what any of that means.
No, I don't.
I'm going to be honest.
Eric, who am I?
I can sit here and pretend like I'm reading it, knowing, but I don't.
Mr. Vaughn?
Essentially, they're just battery backups.
Okay.
That holds the infrastructure up until the standby generator kicks off.
Okay, thank you.
Batteries.
A real fancy way, okay.
Other questions?
Yeah, I do. So actually, I was thinking about the bills for a minute. So where do we stand in terms of trying to request forgiveness from the IRS?
That is in the works. We give your back from them, that we should be receiving a letter if they're going to do a forgiveness.
Okay, very good, thank you.
I just wanted to say under 15.1, the batteries, that's a really nice low cost to the district from where it was at $20,000 after the E-rate and the net cost to us is only $3,000. So that's, that makes the batteries look a little better.
Eric, I do have a question, if I'm a little bit. UPS, in my simple mind, I'm going to say that, usually was to reduce any impact of voltage spikes on the network or system. Is that how you described it? And I'm not questioning how you described it. It's like when you have an eruption, the UPS is there, it's like it suddenly appears, and then, but it is always there, right?
It is always there.
So it's running 24 by 7, and it keeps from voltage surges.
It does do that.
Interruptions from impacting our network.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, this brings us to citizen comments on non-agenda items. The board welcomes comments of a general nature relating to school board business from residents, taxpayers, employees, and students of the district. We request that you limit your comments to three minutes. All other rules for engaging the board detailed in this earlier public comment period apply equally to this session. Do we have anyone? Nope, no comments. Okay. So this time, we will go around for director's comments. We can start with Mrs. Mellinger?
I have none tonight. I have none tonight. Mr. Cole, Kathy?
Good luck to all the parents, teachers, chaperones, nurses that are going to the Orlando trip early, bright and early this morning. Pray for good weather and safe trip and represent Kiskey well.
No comment. I want to thank Mr. Smith for your presentation and also good luck, you know, to the kids and everybody on the Orlando trip.
I have nothing to make, thank you.
Mr. Shannon?
Happy New Year, good luck in 2025.
Yes. Do you have one?
No, just. Yes. I said no, not I said yes.
Yes, I'm like, wait, what?
No, because you mentioned the funding, we talked about it in the Buildings and Grounds meeting with some of these, you know, technological infrastructures. When I met with Eric, he really gave a shout-out, kudos to our food service department and also Mr. Roberto. And our numbers and our data being as good as it is, our reimbursement rate has increased in somewhere as a 5% to 10%, and that's, you know, credited to the worker, the people making sure that our data looks good. And it's all driven by data, so I did want to publicly thank them for that, and that's all I have.
Okay. I think the only thing that I will say, I really appreciate Mr. Smith's, you know, curriculum updates and always, you know, striving to give the best to our students, what they request, what they need, you know, what is important for them to graduate, especially like looking at all those different pathways. So thank you for that. And I think it's exciting here at Kiskey. We have some good sports going on right now, lots of wrestling tournaments this weekend, basketball.
Basketball team's doing very well.
Basketball team is going great, lots of, lots of busy things happening. So if you get a chance, head out, you know, support our students in all the different ways, they're doing some great stuff. So thank you very much. Any, anything else? Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you. Oh, wait. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry, we've been here since 5:00. I'm so sorry. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?